Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the October 31st, 2017 special meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Council members Agajanian.
Present.
Devine.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Sinanian.
Here.
Mayor Garpedian. Here. May I please have your report?
The agenda for the October 31st, 2017 special public meeting of the city council was postponed on Monday, October 30th, 2017, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. There are three items, actually four items before you today. The first item is director of community development regarding downtown Holiday Trolley Service route designation. One A is motion directing staff on preferred route to the downtown Holiday Trolley Service.
Mr. Mayor, this is simply an opportunity that staff is requesting to reconsider that route that was approved previously so that we can ensure that the folks on the trolley are on for a minimal amount of time, which means just keeping the route north and south on brand as opposed to going the loop out to Central where conflicts with B-line and possible construction activity would delay and slow down the headways. And so with council approval, we would ask, as we begin to roll out this project and advertise for it, ask that you give us the revised direction on this preferred route sticking solely on the Brand Boulevard route for the Holiday Trolley.
Okay. Any comments?
I just have one comment, if I may. This seems to be a more efficient route, and it's time-sensitive, so I think it's a good decision. And I want to stress to everybody that's watching out there, there was an article in the news press that mentioned that the cost of the trolley was going to be like $10 one way. This trolley is going to be free. There is no cost. And I'm awaiting a retraction or a different correction in the news press. So I want everybody out there to know that. It's going to be a lot of fun, and hopefully we'll have a Santa onboard and maybe, you know, it's just going to be a fun trolley for the holidays. Thank you.
Mr. Agajanian.
I have to say "free" to those who will ride on it, but it didn't say that way. It says will cost $9.20 to the city up to over $18 per travel. So the city will bear the cost of somebody who wants to come, doesn't want to take the B-line, and will use this service, and the city will pay for that person, and total cost to the city is $143,000. And to that, we have to add also that they would ride on B-line now for two months, which will, this will run, I don't know, it's $2.50 or $3, whatever the ride is from, if they would use the B-line, they're not going to pay that during the two months. It will be approximately $18,000 that B-line will lose. So total cost will be $161,000, in my opinion, for just a few people who will use this service. Northwest will not going to benefit from this. Adams Hill will not going to benefit, nowhere else they're going to benefit, just the two big businesses in Glendale where this bus will drive or bring the passengers here, and we will save, in an hour, 6.4 riders we're going to have, and possibly four less car will come to downtown. But instead, this big bus will come to downtown, so I don't see any benefit, and still, I think this is too much. Thank you.
Mr. Najarian has comments?
Any more comments?
Well, we voted on this already, and in the spirit of giving, I think the city wanted to make sure that we put aside the strict calculation of the fiscal impact and give the residents and shoppers and children, young children, during the holiday season some fun in their lives that won't cost them anything to ride up and down wonderful Brand Boulevard, which will be decorated with the holiday festivities thanks to the Downtown Glendale Association, and go to their favorite shopping malls to visit Santa, and visit everything in between from Mountain Street all the way down to Colorado. So you can't always look at everything on a dollar and cent basis. I don't dispute any of the dollar figures that Mr. Agajanian put forward, but sometimes you have to look at it in the spirit of a holiday season.
Quick question for staff. Mr. Ochoa, I think last time we touched upon this, how much does the B-line bus ride cost us per passenger?
Oh, sir, I'd have to defer to Mr. Landzaffin.
It is a dollar. And two, I understand the logic behind it, and Mr. Agajanian did say his opinion. What staff is looking at, our estimate is that most of the people that are using the B-line one and two are taking it from northwest or the north part of town all the way to the transportation center. So we don't anticipate that we'll lose riders from B-line to ride the shuttle. Rather, it will be shoppers that park in one place and want to shop up and down Brand Boulevard, or that are in the office buildings and using that shuttle. But again, certainly the numbers that he gave were the numbers reflected last week.
Right, and I absolutely agree with Councilmember Agajanian. Those are numbers are what they are, and it is going to cost the city that much money per rider, but we are trying to add some cheer and some fun to downtown Glendale and see how popular this trolley will be, and add some cheer and increase business for the business district in the city of Glendale. So.
There it is.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I move the item.
With the Brand route.
With the Brand, yes, yes. Circling Brand.
One A, okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian.
No.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Garpedian. Yes. What's the next item, please?
Item two is police chief request for authorization to enter into professional services agreement, PSA, for medical services for police department arrestees and inmates. Two A is a motion authorizing to execute a PSA with Vital Medical Services LLC over a 32-month period with total expenditures not to exceed $850,000.
So, Ochoa?
Yes, sir. I think it was three years ago, the city of Glendale Police Department and the principals at Vital Medical came together to pioneer what actually is a very innovative program. Previous to this partnership, when there was a need for a blood draw, when there was a need for some medical clearance, officers would have to leave the field and escort the arrestee to local hospitals to provide that service, encounter what we call "wall time," literally standing against the wall, waiting to be seen at the various hospitals. The niche that was identified by the folks at Vital was that they would, instead of having you take the arrestee to the hospital, they would bring the medical services to the jail at the end of the day to provide a number of services. What you have during that three, two-and-a-half to three-year prove-up period that goes back to, actually about a little over three years, to 2014, is this notion of proof of concept, and then ultimately the marketing of that concept around through the Los Angeles region and hopefully beyond. It's a better use of public safety services, which you know are the most expensive assets that we have in our city resource toolbox. So wanting to continue that, we are asking that we continue with Vital Medical for a 32-month period set to expire June 30th in 2018. No, geez, in 2020. Am I right? My apologies. We will go forward at that time and presumably do some type of procurement process. However, it's worth noting that today Vital Medical is effectively the only player in this space that provides this range of services, as again, they have kind of pioneered this level of service for public safety in the Los Angeles region and probably even beyond. I think Chief Castro, if you want to call him up, can speak to the range of services and also can also speak to the reception that this degree of service has had around the region. Certainly while he was the chair of LA County Chiefs, this is something along the lines of our tech medicine program that show Glendale at the forefront of trying to save as much money as we can and keep resources on the street. So with that, the agreement is for $850,000 over the course of this 32-month process or contracts, and if you have specific questions, Chief can answer those for you.
Chief? Can you give us a quick report?
Yes, so several years ago, talking with the fire chief, what we found was that fire was making about 100 to 200 calls a year to the police department to help transport inmates who needed medical care to one of our local hospitals. Then we would have to have two officers at the hospital waiting behind everyone else in the busy ERs until we could get treatment for our inmate. We also saw a very clear pattern where individuals thought that if they complained about a medical ailment, we would release them from custody rather than spend the time, money, and energy to take them to a local hospital. We also had several incidents in our local ERs where the suspects would fight with our officers. We had a couple times where they got out of the ER and we had to chase them down. So I figured there had to be a better way. And talking about this with the fire chief, we found this company, Vital Medical Services, and they were coming up with a new concept where they would bring you a medical facility in your jails. We have a room in our jail that is set up like a little mini ER. They come and they spend, during our busy times, they're there at the station, working constantly. During the other times, they're on call. So the officer makes the call from the field, they usually beat us to the station, they make the treatment. We have saved over 8,500 officer hours over these last three years. I mean, that's the amount of time that we're sitting on the street. That's a lot of additional personnel, plus we don't have the expense, and we don't have the inconvenience of fire to bring these people out of our jail and to our facility. They also do a whole range of services. They do the blood draws for drug and alcohol, they do Taser dart removals, they do booking clearances that are approved by the LA County Jail when the inmate gets moved over to the county facility. They also treat our employees. So if an employee has an exposure to blood or some other thing, we'd have to send them out to a clinic. Vital comes and does that for us, for our employee, in the privacy and the comfort of our police station, and we get that turnaround immediately. We're not, they're not waiting for days for results to come back. We also found that we have to do fit testing for our gas masks every year. They helped us do that. They are finding more and more ways to help us and keep us more efficient and save us costs. The cost of what we pay them is cheaper than what we've ever paid to any of the other local medical facilities, and we, again, we gain that time, but those officers aren't off the streets. They're continually working in the jail, and we get the patrol officers back out into the field. When we do our DUI checkpoints, they actually come out to the checkpoint and they do the treatments and the draws right there in the field. So the officer doesn't have to go back to the station, they do it right there for us, which actually is a better evidence item for us because it captures truly what that influence is, be it drugs or alcohol, at the time of the stop and/or arrest. And other times, we have to wait, sometimes those things will dissipate, and we don't get the result that we had, and these individuals may be able to get away with something.
So, just one question. The 8,500 officer hours translates into what dollar amount?
That's probably going to be probably around five officers, five additional full-time officers that we would, you know, be having out there.
Dollar-wise, what does it translate to?
Fully burdened is going to be in excess of a million dollars.
In savings.
Okay. Councilmember Devine.
You know, I think we've probably all gotten emails from our residents about why we haven't issued an RFP for this. Is this the only company that does this?
It is, and this is a PSA which the charter allows for us to do this. We have looked, and you can look at all the cities that are now, Glendale was the first. We were the first ones. They gave us a really good deal for three years. They lost money doing what they did for us. All these other cities that are listed in the staff report now contract with Vital. The LA County Sheriff's Department is doing a trial to bring Vital Medical. So all these other cities have looked, we have looked, we can find some, there are companies that will do similar services, but not exact. They don't have the range of service levels that Vital has for us. So we could probably find someone that might come out and say, "I can do a blood draw for you." But they won't be able to do the entire scope of medical services that we need for our employees, as well as we need for the inmates that are in our care.
But it's probably worth, to your point, ma'am, to the extent that people cite the charter for our public works projects and other procurements, you would have to go out to bid for professional service agreements like this, especially one that is so unique to this niche. It's not required, in fact, I don't know, as the chief says, you would find somebody fulfill that scope.
The other question that was also posed was in fact that, you know, why don't we let the hospitals bid for this? But you're saying that the hospitals are more expensive.
Correct.
And also more time-consuming, and also a danger to probably the people that these arrestees would, you know, I mean, if they make problems in the emergency room, it could be, it could get pretty bad. I have one other question, and this is about the price, the rates. I noticed that for the eight months, it's $204,000, which is, let's see, $25,500 a month, I think, is, am I right? Is that? And then, so, and then for the next two years that we're asking, or that we're going to, that you're asking for, it's $322.80 per year, but when I do the math, that's an uptick of over $20,000. So it's a difference, like, if we were at the same amount, 25 per month, for two more years, it should be $306,000, but it's 322. Is there a?
Each year, they get a potential 3% increase based on the CPI.
And that's figured in this?
And that's figured in there. So 850 is the maximum amount. We don't expect it will get there, but we also built in, like I said, for three years, they have lost money on the city of Glendale, but they're here, they're in our city, their offices are on brand.
And in fairness to certainly the city and the department, this also was opportunity for proof of concept by Vital, right? So as much as we love and respect the work that they do, this was pioneered a private and a public player in order to develop this concept.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Any more questions? Mr. Najarian.
I don't have a problem with this contract. I know the officers, they're members, some of them, they're a member of Kauanis Club that I attend. They're good people. I have a problem with one of their information videos that, Chief, you were in it, and Glendale Police Department with their name, officers were in it, and also the videotape is showing the police department facilities. I don't know if that's okay. I mean, police officers with badges.
Certainly, I would have to defer to the chief and city attorney. I don't believe, if memory serves, that any of our officers were paid to be in the video. It's a testimonial gratis that was used to help develop, again, this concept. The GPD alongside Vital developed for our use and then also to try to put out to other police departments. So certainly, I don't think there's any legal issue. I defer to city attorney as to whether or not there would be any ethical issue. Certainly, if our folks were being paid to be in a video, I would think there'd be a problem, but I don't think that anyone was ever paid, if I recollect.
No, they were on duty. I didn't receive any compensation. We made that video, along with the police chief of Redondo Beach, to market to other LA County police chiefs, agencies, and through the state to show the concept. And we also used it as a nomination for an award on cutting-edge technology. I also wrote a paper for Cal Chiefs talking about this partnership, because it is so unique to be able to do that and not have to hire full-time medical staff like the county jail does, for instance. So it's a marketing video for fellow chiefs to show what we're doing and give them an idea of how they could save money and also have the same conveniences that we have found using this company within our jail.
Okay. Comments?
That's a little troubling to me, too, because the, I understand it's good for them to market this video and have LA, no, I'm sorry, Glendale Police Officer, Glendale Chief in the video. I just don't understand why we would do it, why we'd be interested in it. We have our relationship that we have, they're getting paid, they're, you know, we're paying them, and they provide a service, but why are we allowing ourselves to be used to encourage others to engage in financial transactions with this private entity?
I would just, I would tell you that as a demonstration and as a means of us actually applying for other recognitions, that they're going to do a promotional video. We've done other promotional videos with other companies, certainly for some of our economic development programs.
For profit companies?
Sure. I mean, you look at Tech Week, we have done quite a bit with private companies up to and.
But that's for us, right? That's for us. It's for our Tech Week.
But those companies also utilize those materials.
So are you asking, like, should we be paid for those?
No. I'm saying.
The city, I mean.
The city shouldn't participate in a commercial video, commercial that's being used by the commercial entity. So Tech Week, I don't think it's a good analogy, because Tech Week, it's, we're making it for us, so it's out in the, sort of in the open, in the ether, and if someone finds a way to make use of it for themselves, okay, it's fair game, but for us to be in their commercial is an entirely different matter.
But it was done for an award, for consideration of an award to show what we're doing and what, at that time, you know, Redondo Beach was looking at doing also. So there was two different agencies. We submitted this to show the good work that we do. We do videos for our crime lab to highlight our technologies there. We've done videos highlighting our work with the homeless and the mentally ill. So even though it may sometimes give an appearance that we're doing a marketing video for them, it was truly just to document and highlight what we're doing for award recognitions of the different things that we've been doing here in Glendale, and it's another example of the cutting-edge things that fire and police are doing in partnership, and this is a great partnership with a private company, so I don't have to go out and hire medical staff and make them city employees.
Okay. Mr. Najarian?
So I approve the item before us, using this company and its cutting-edge, I guess, operational procedures with the city. But I would say that in the future, and the video is done, in the future, if there's any sort of appearances that could be used for marketing by any of our department heads, that at least it come to the city manager beforehand and get approval and just have some sort of, I mean, what's done is done, and I'm not saying what we did was wrong or not, but in the future, if there's a question like that, let's make sure at least it goes through the process and maybe we get the input of the city manager for approval on that.
Okay.
And how about the facilities? I mean, okay, you are not paid, the officer is in there, is not paid, but they were using our facilities and our motorcycle, our police vehicle. How that happens. Inside the police department is videotaped in there. Videotaped in there.
Well, showing the facilities that they have invested into our jail. They brought that equipment in to set up the medical room in there. The other officers that are involved in the field, a lot of that was during operations where Vital was out working with us in the field. Those officers were already out working those type of things, they just documented it.
So we can only look forward, we can only look forward, ma'am, and so let's make sure we have some.
I don't have a problem with the contract. I'm in favor of the contract. I just.
Mr. Najarian, are you seconding Mr. Najarian's motion?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, please. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. No, we have two cards.
Yes, 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 indeed.
Motion was by Councilmember Najarian.
Yes, before we take a roll, Annette Argarian?
She left.
She left? Mike Mohill.
Mr. Mayor, how long?
Three minutes.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Mike Mohill. First, I apologize to Mrs. Yasmin Beers for saying her husband was a government employee. On another matter, it seems our police chief Castro is again violating the trust of our community. Why is Chief Castro asking for a no-bid contract for our police department medical services? Did you know Police Chief Castro is on the promotional video of Vital Medical Services? Did you know retired Police Chief John New from Torrance is one of the officers for Vital Medical Services? Did you know that former Chief John New was invited in 2016 by Chief Castro to sit on a Glendale Police Captain Exam Panel, whose findings were disqualified because of improper communication between the chief and retired chief New? Just for the record, in 2016, Councilman Agajanian, you were not on council when the Glendale Coalition of Rebaired Government exposed the improper communication by Chief Castro. This information was also later reported in your Glendale Community Newsletter. Did you know that former District Attorney Steve Cooley is listed as Chief Executive Officer of Vital Medical Services? Vital Medical Services is nothing but a good old boys' club with Glendale Police Chief Castro doing a video promotion, and Steve Cooley, good name, is being used to win contracts. Why weren't Glendale Adventists, Glendale Memorial, Glendale Virginal Hills, urgent care facilities also asked to bid on this nearly $1 million contract? Councilman Sinanian, you have often asked our city manager, why don't we have more competitive bidding on large contracts, and now from why only one source? Today, we know why we, now we can assume why there is no competitive bidding for this police department contract. Our police chief Castro is using his name, position, and our city's name in his promotional video. It seems Vital Medical Services was set up by police chiefs, retired district attorneys, who have an inside track and connection to departments and city personnel that give them a competitive advantage. There's no need to accept this new contract, as we have about eight months to find another vendor with impeccable credentials. I would suggest Police Chief Castro read Government Code Number 18704, which states the following: "A public official at any state or local government has a prohibited conflict of interest and may not make, participate in making, or in any way use or attempt to use his or his official position to influence a government decision. If any council member votes for this item, you are sadly corrupt." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. So before you call for a vote, so why wasn't this a competitive bidding process?
Because taking and working with our local hospitals is what we used to do. We have to take the arrestees to the hospital. So to the extent that we don't want to do that anymore, because it takes officers out of the field, something that you would think Mr. Mohill would be appreciative in terms of stretching that value dollar, we found a vendor to actually come into the jails and provide that service. And right now, for the full range of services that we need, we don't know, I certainly don't know of any other provider that will do that. Can you get a clinician to come out and draw blood? Sure, but everything else that goes along with the workplace safety that the chief has described, no one else does that. Now, as I said at the beginning, in three years' time, could there be, as this market develops? Yeah, probably. But heretofore today, I would tell you that that animal doesn't exist, at least not to my knowledge. If you'd like to ask the folks from Vital Medical who are here, they can tell you what their market looks like today.
So they're, they have like a monopoly position in this market right now?
Only to the extent that they were the first ones to get where there was a niche based on their knowledge of the market.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, a professional service agreement is exempt from competitive bidding under the city charter. It's an RFP for those services, and issuance of an RFP is not required under all circumstances. It can be selected if there's a sole source or a particular type of specialty professional service. So it is.
And the case here is what, sole source? What's it?
This, well, it's not, it is a professional service, as opposed to a competitive bid for labor under our.
Okay, so that's like a formal answer.
That's a formal answer.
What's the logical answer? I mean, that's the question, because in light of sort of the stuff that Mr. Mohill is talking about, I think, you know, I like the logical answer much more than I like the formal.
That's the basis of it.
I invite you to call up the folks from Medical, and they will tell you about who else is in this space, and I think today, no one yet is in that space. Now, when you look at the amount of work that is being done around the county, in a few years' time, replication is the greatest form of flattery, they will have competitors going forward. There's no two ways about that. I think that more and more entrance into that market, into that space, will occur. And that's why I think you're looking at this as a three-year contract, not a five-year, 10-year, 20-year contract that goes on forever, but rather something that's relatively short-term, because we know council does value bidding out those services, even if they're professional services.
And if we were to do an RFP, the end, the result would be that only one entity would apply. I mean, that's, I'm assuming that's what you're telling me, Mr. Mohill.
That's what I would tell you, in terms of the full range of services, or you'd have somebody that doesn't have proof of concept, that hasn't done it anywhere else, that you would be saying, "Let me take on the liability with someone that's never done it, let me possibly put folks at risk that hasn't done it." I think you're well-served to let that market mature before you go and test that market.
Would it cost us any money to do this RFP?
It would cost you time and staff to do it, and to the extent that you have your staff, certainly from the public safety departments, both police and fire, because it's, fire's also impacted, telling you that this is the right thing to do, this is our best recommendation. the right thing to do, this is our best recommendation, certainly it's your policy choice to not go with that, but we can only make the recommendations to you. Ultimately, council has to make the policy choice.
I think doing the RFP most likely would result in what you said, it would result in, but it would eliminate this cloud over its, you know, its head. Because there would be no questions. Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Well, what, you know, we, what we could do, I think, is perhaps give them the eight months instead of the eight months and two years. And then that would give time for an RFP, and then we could revisit this.
I'll vote for that.
Suggestion.
So that'll be my motion.
So is that a substitute motion?
Or is there, I'm sorry, the substitute motion?
So that is priority over the original motion.
Wait, did you want to second it?
Oh, okay.
Or did I just second your motion? I seconded your substitute motion.
Okay. Okay, yeah. Any more discussions?
No. We have, what we have on table.
So there's a substitute motion to have the contract go just for the eight months, not to do an extension of it. And during that time, come back with some sort of RFP.
Okay.
Or other, to see if anyone else is interested.
Before we take a vote, I think Chief wants to say...
It would be a price change if we're just going it for eight months. So I would need to have Lionel come up and maybe explain that. Because we won't get the deal. The deal is for three years. That's why we're getting the significant savings that makes it cheaper than going to a hospital.
But why? What is, what changes?
Let me, let me ask one of them to come up and explain the process and the...
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, city manager, Mr. Cho, and all staff here. As one of the founders of Vital Medical Services, the basis behind this program was a niche in a market that was initially announced to us by a law enforcement agency, not within the city of Glendale. As an emergency manager for many, many years, the issue came to light of, you know, we're coming into the ER with our arrestees. We're sitting there for two to three hours. They're fighting, they're screaming. You know, there's a potential for a risk management aspect there. So as many have mentioned in regards to a sole source, yes, we are a sole source vendor that's out there, Mr. Sinanian, there's nobody that does compete with us currently. Currently, with the type of facility that the Glendale jail is, it's a Type 1 jail. No medical is required whatsoever, hence allowing and saying if someone requires a medical clearance for pre-booking services through the LA County Sheriff's Department, they will ultimately have to go to a hospital or a medical center to have this clearance done. As a risk management partner here, we are absolutely sole source. And I like to not necessarily shed light on some of the incidences that have occurred recently with other cities such as the city of LA, but with a simple TASER deployment and a 17-year-old who was tased in the city of LA back in 2015, that resulted in a $3.5 million settlement because that person was transported to Harbor UCLA General down in the Torrance area, ultimately reached for the officer's gun there, and was shot in an ER. So the whole aspect, based upon that, you know, it was a justified shooting that occurred. And that's something that we don't want to introduce into any of the communities that we serve. All the arrestees are seen in a secure environment. This is absolutely sole source. Nobody is out there that does this currently whatsoever. And as you said, Mr. Sinanian, I've watched many council meetings and had many discussions, we welcome competition. Absolutely, we welcome competition. So when that time does come up and the time for RFP is out there, but as sole source right now, there is no competition that does what we do. But, and that's where we're at. And that's the whole basis and a justice of the service.
Will you explain the cost difference? They'll be more expensive in...
Absolutely. I'll have our managing partner, Armin Vartanian, come up here, and he'll speak to the numbers aspect of that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmembers?
For the record, managing director. A small technicality. So we've lost our shirts on the Glendale contract. I know Alex doesn't like me to discuss it, but we've lost about $450-plus thousand over this last term. This cuts the loss. I still lose on this contract.
Why have you lost the...
Why? Because we've got 24/7 staff that have to deploy like this. Imagine it like a fire department. I can't pay them by procedure necessarily. I can't pay them whenever they show up and they come in. They have to be ready and be deployed to any of our cities. I can't ever call the chief and say, oh, sorry, we're not having someone come out. So we have to be able to have that base there. And Glendale is such a busy and has such a big volume that we constantly have someone in there, and oftentimes we have them sit there. We've worked very closely with the chief and the chief's office, and they've twisted our arms to the point where I'm losing every single month on this contract. If it does go to RFP, I'll go to market. And it ends up costing a lot more. This is more of a partnership and more of us wanting to work together. I live here. I live on Lexington. Our office is on Central. I go up and down Brand. I'm looking forward to the Trolley. So this is, this is my city. So I want to make sure that Glendale's done right. But as part of that comes with a consistency. Now, I'm okay losing a little bit every month. As we build scale, hopefully that'll close its gap. I don't ever expect to make any money on this company. I expect at least for it to break even and cover its costs. And that's the general. So if it's an eight-month period, and it comes out to market in competitive bidding, then, you know, I'm going to have to move to something where at least my costs are covered and not where I'm in a constant loss situation.
If I can, so one last question. So you're willing to lose money on the Glendale contract because you're hoping that, you know, the Glendale contract leads to other contracts? Okay, I understand.
Absolutely.
So you're building your business up?
You know what? I'll support that first motion, Mr. Najarian's motion in that case.
And you are the sole, the sole provider?
Absolutely, absolutely. And candidly, I joke about this, but at our profit margins, I think we might be the sole provider for a while. And nobody wants to do this. For one hospital administrator in the year, I built a hospital in the Glendale jail, or Alex really built a hospital in the Glendale jail, insured up to the same levels as hospitals, quick response times, and eager people that are happy to see inmates and suspects and help the police. And the police are in and out in 15 minutes in a secure environment.
I renew the motion.
So...
Which one?
The first one.
Whatever we have, I'm okay with it. I just wanted to know...
So I think technically speaking, you would have to withdraw your motion.
Okay, I'll withdraw my motion.
Am I correct, Madam Chair? And the second would have to be also to withdraw?
I withdraw my second. I thought I did.
And so the only motion was the first one on the table?
Okay, I renew the motion to approve whatever we have, staff is...
I'm sorry, the initial motion was made by Councilmember Najarian, and the initial second was made by Councilmember Agajanian.
Right. We're going back to that motion.
We're going back to that motion.
Right. Roll call?
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Final motion?
It is staff recommendation.
Staff recommendation?
Staff recommendation.
Okay.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Garpadian?
Yes. Thank you. Next item, please.
3A is Fire Chief regarding proposed agreement with UCLA Center for Pre-Hospital Care to Provide Professional Emergency Medical Services Nurse Education to the Fire Department. 3A is motion authorizing to execute a professional services agreement with UCLA Center for Pre-Hospital Care.
Mr. Cho?
I'm sorry about that. Just very quickly, and I'll bring up Chief, if you have, Chief Fish, if you have any questions. As part of our EMS program, having a paramedic program in-house, we do have to have a nurse educator. Until several years ago, we were able to collaborate with, I believe it was Adventist Hospital, they would have a nurse educator for us. They got out of that particular business. At this point, we're able to work with UCLA as most agencies in Los Angeles County do. And so through UCLA, we have the nurse educator that is here before you for request. Effectively, a nurse educator does a lot of the continuing education, the quality control, and ensuring that everything that our folks are doing in the field is consistent with up-to-date guidelines. It's, you know, the teaching, the teacher. It is making sure that our people are safe and that the care that they are administering is safe. So with that, I'll bring up Chief Fish, and if you have any specific questions for him, certainly he can answer those.
Good afternoon, Chief.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my pleasure to be here.
Any questions for Chief?
Oh, yes. Sir Agajanian? Yes, I was reading here, so you're using UCLA, but previously using Glendale Adventist Medical Center for the same services?
That's correct, sir.
So did we try to reach them again? I know it has been said here in 2013, I guess, 2012, they stopped providing these services.
That's correct.
Did we try to reach them back and see, maybe they do it now because they are...
No, they are... Yeah, we went back, we went back to them, and they got out of the nurse educator business altogether. They did that as a favor to us in 1998 when we started providing advanced life support on our ambulances. And so what ended up happening was Judy Grimaldi was the nurse educator for professional ambulance, and she came over to help us launch our paramedic program within the city of Glendale. She liked what she saw, and then she decided that it was no longer, she no longer wanted to be a nurse educator. And so when she got out, the, basically the favor that Glendale Adventist did for us was over with. And so we, we went outside to look for other, other people that could provide us, other agencies that could provide us with a nurse educator. And that's where UCLA came in handy. UCLA is the gold standard right now as it relates to nurse educators in the county. Most of your smaller departments use UCLA, and they have five nurse educators, which is really handy. Because if one of the nurse educators is sick or injured or can't show up, we have four other people in that person's place that can take the place of that nurse educator. So Glendale Adventist effectively got out of the business of doing nurse educators, and that's why we don't, we don't ask them to do it anymore.
Okay. Any more questions?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Thank you, Chief. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Garpadian?
Yes. Next item, please.
4 is Director of Community Development and Public Works Regarding Glendale Burbank Regional Street Car Feasibility Study. 4A is motion authorizing to execute a professional services agreement with HNTB Corporation.
Mr. Cho?
Yes, sir.
And just, there's a B to that. Resolution appropriating $200,000 in grant monies from the Southern California Association of Governments.
Mr. Mayor, if it would please the council, can we take just a five-minute break so we can do a bit of research that's important to the council?
Five minutes, please. Okay, we are back from our short recess. What's next, please? Mr. Cho?
Yes, sir.
Before, yeah, before Mr. Cho starts on this next item, as much as I would love to participate in the deliberations and the ultimate vote, because the concept, the project, the idea is very dear to my heart, I have to recuse myself because of a campaign contribution. So, okay, good luck. Thank you.
I will tell you, sir, that, I'm sorry? Yes, Happy Halloween, indeed. And I will tell you, the reason why I'm dressed so informally is our theme was Western, and so this is about as Western as I get. No truer words really were spoken than those from Councilman Sinanian. This is close to his heart. It's close to the mayor's heart, who worked very hard to get the grant from SCAG, very close to Mr. Najarian's heart, as this is something that fits within the purview of his transit background. Certainly, from the alternate position on Eco Rapid, Mr. Agajanian has evinced a tremendous interest. And certainly from the COG and SCAG realm also, Councilwoman Divine has had a great desire to see this type of project come to fruition. So with all five of you channeling all your best energy here, we finally are to hopefully select a consultant that will move forward with the project, the feasibility study for the much anticipated, long-awaited streetcar for Glendale. With that, I will bring up our transit planner, Justin Robertson, and he will take you through a brief presentation and also introduce you to the team from HNTB, who is the staff recommendation pursuant to the RFP process that was conducted. Justin?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, tonight, we're asking you to authorize the city manager to execute a professional services agreement for the Glendale Burbank Regional Street Car Feasibility Study. The last time we came to you with this item was, I believe, June 25th, and we went into pretty good detail at that time. Tonight's presentation will be a little truncated because you've heard a lot of the details relative to this study before. In addition to, so that would be to enter into a PSA with HNTB Corporation following a competitive RFP process. We'd also ask you to approve a resolution of appropriation so that we can accept the SCAG funds that are going to pay for roughly half of this study. So this feasibility study is going to look at a broad range of topics related to what would it take to get a streetcar up and running in Glendale? What are the myriad considerations with regards to where should it run? What are some potential parking or traffic impacts, utilities impacts? What could ridership look like? What would it cost to build, to maintain, to operate? And how would we pay for it? What are our options with regards to funding sources, timing? What's the process related to those and which are perhaps the best fit for the city? As well as making sure that at more than one, at multiple stages in the process, we're going back to you, HNTB is coming back to city staff, to the city council, to the people of Glendale, checking in and making sure that Glendaleans and our associated stakeholders, SCAG, the city of Burbank metro, certainly Hollywood Burbank Airport, weighing in on the alternatives that we ultimately narrow down into a locally preferred alternative, and then we study that in depth. As part of the RFP, we also solicited bids on not only the Glendale portion of the project, but a presumptive Burbank portion of the project. Because as initially envisioned, the city of Glendale had seen this connecting Larry Zarian Transportation Center to Hollywood Burbank Airport somehow, and the purpose of this study was to help us figure out how best to do that. Since then, the city of Burbank has weighed in, and they've said, well, we might like to look at other destinations for this, other routes that the city of Glendale might not have considered. And so as part of this, we broke up, we requested that the proposers tell us what would it cost to study the Glendale portion in depth? What would it cost to study a Burbank portion in depth? And in addition to those, so now the city of Burbank has something to consider. In addition to those, we've asked them to provide bids on studying personal rapid transit technology, which is a bit of a hot topic that we heard from folks at SCAG, as well as on the dais here, that that was a topic of interest. So we did solicit bids on studying that technology as well, and of course, the Burbank portion, as I'd mentioned.
So the PRT is going to be part of this report that's coming back? As part of this study?
So right now, the contract that we're proposing to negotiate with HNTB is for the Glendale study. But what you, what we've been provided by HNTB, as well as the other proposers, is if this city council so shows, they could add on those to the contract. But right now, the contract that we're considering does not currently include that alternative. That is in your hands if you so choose, if you give us that direction.
Okay. Okay.
So as I mentioned, it was a competitive RFP process that a few weeks after we came to you with permission to do so, we advertised this project. We received five responsive proposals. We received six proposals in total, one of which proposed solely on the PRT study. And in asking for proposals for a streetcar feasibility study, proposing to only study PRT was considered non-responsive. However, we do now have that proposal, that one proposal, and we do know what they presume it would cost to do that work. So we, we have that information as well. The rankings of the written proposals and then the oral presentations were done by a panel consisting of city of Glendale staff from Community Development and Public Works, as well as the city of Burbank, the project manager for the city of Los Angeles's streetcar project on Broadway, and a representative from SCAG, who is our funder in part. The RFP considered 24 different areas that proposers were told in advance they would be scored on. Cost was one of 24 considerations and certainly not, there was no weighting, it was not the most important, it was not the least important, but it was one of the 24 criteria in the RFP. At the end of the day, and what you can see in the staff report before you, there's a table there illustrating that HNTB, given all 24 areas on which they were, the proposers were scored, HNTB Corporation scored highest overall pursuant to Government Code Section 4526. The primary considerations for ultimately awarding these contract, public, excuse me, professional services agreements is on the basis of competence and qualifications. And in total, we believe that the 24 criteria that we've used this and in the past for evaluating these sorts of proposals, that that is what those criteria get at. And finally, we did follow up on the references that they provided to us, and we remain confident that HNTB is a good, solid choice for the city of Glendale that can perform as proposed. HNTB Corporation, they're a rather large firm that has worked on many, many streetcar projects and urban light rail projects in the United States, including most recently and most relevantly on the OC Streetcar in Santa Ana and Garden Grove. There's a nice, long list there of the, that's only their streetcar experience up there in the United States. And members of the project team that they've proposed would be working on this for us, have also worked on the LA Streetcar and a number of others, some of which are running today, others are still in planning. Other local experience from this team is on the Doran Street Grade Separation Project. HNTB was a major part of the planning and design portion of that project, as well as community outreach and the environmental process, and I'm sure I'm leaving something out, but Glendale knows these folks for that reason as well. Also on their team, they have folks that have taken streetcars through the federal funding and the federal environmental process. The feds are not the only game in town when we're looking for funding for this project, but it may be too soon to say that we don't need federal funds. And so the consideration of what it takes today to set us up, should this council choose to enter the federal funding process to build a streetcar, we need to take that into account today. We need to be thinking about all of the ways in which we might fund this. And so it's important that some of the folks on this team have direct experience with those processes, including one member who actually worked for the FTA administering the federal funding process. Finally, the HNTB Corporation, interestingly, their work on the OC Streetcar lately has involved working directly with the California Public Utilities Commission on, on working through some of the regulatory issues, particularly relating to safety, on the OC Streetcar. And streetcars, though they are, there are extant streetcars across the country, they're relatively new and rare in California, and so some of the ways in which the state regulates them is still being worked out. And HNTB has been at the table for that process, trying to get the OC Streetcar ready for So, as we had mentioned to you in June, we see this as a 12-month study. If you give the city manager the go-ahead on the PSA this evening, within the next month, we're going to get that PSA executed and have our kickoff meeting, and we will hit the ground running. We have four major workshops, these milestones you see in the, the project schedule here. They are not all public workshops initially. The initial workshops are to help internally define the project and help figure out at the staff level, at the city council level, our, our sort of internal stakeholders, what is it exactly we're proposing to study so that then HNTB can go and do their homework? So as you can see, the initial tasks are about determining existing conditions and doing data collection and figuring out how exactly we propose to engage the public moving forward. So the initial phases are all about laying the groundwork for then taking it to the public and having them weigh in, perhaps at an open house or a workshop or a series of workshops. Those are decisions that are going to be made very early on, so then we can execute. And what else can I say? So, some of the next steps generally, let's take a step back. How do we get to a streetcar? It starts tonight with a feasibility study. Part of this feasibility study is going to, as I had mentioned, put together a funding plan. It's going to do a broad survey of what are the funding options out there, federal, state, Measure M. There's a lot of new options on the horizon that were not available to the city or to anyone back in 2005, the last time the city of Glendale flirted with the idea of a streetcar feasibility study. So it's a rather different picture today on how projects get, projects like this get funded. So as part of this study, we propose putting together, doing that study of how could we possibly fund this? How could we phase this? What would an initial segment, if we weren't going to build it all at once, what would that look like? So that's some of the work that's going to occur as part of this study. That would, having this study enables us to implement that funding plan and move into the environmental process, to design the project itself, and then to really spend the big money on constructing and ultimately operating the project. These estimated costs at the bottom of the slide here, these are from the very, very rough conceptual estimates that Alan Loomis had presented to, to this body last year, I want to say. And this assumes, now this range, it's a broad range because it's, it's, that's dependent on a lot of things, including what sort of, what sort of streetcar equipment do you run? Where specifically will it go? Will some routes be more challenging than others? So we provide a range here, and again, this is a very broad estimate. This assumes 9.7 miles, which is from Larry Zarian Brand Boulevard out Glen Oaks all the way to the airport. Now, again, this could be phased, this could only operate in a limited version of some of the concepts we've talked about in public. And so these costs may not speak to what it would actually cost. It could be more, it could be less, but for the purposes of discussion. This assumption, the 9.7 miles, also includes a spur up to Mountain along Brand, which was a topic of discussion from this body back in June. It was mentioned, the question was asked, there was a conceptual line on a map, and one of the members of this body said, well, why not take it up to Mountain? That's included in this assumption here, as well as the three miles into, through Burbank to the airport. So, again, to wrap up tonight, we're asking you to authorize Mr. Ochoa to execute a professional services agreement with HNTB Corporation, and we're asking you to appropriate $200,000 from our friends at SCAG.
Any questions?
Yes.
Zarganian?
Okay. I did not see on your presentation in the report on page four, which I have, not the presentation you have done.
Page four.
On page four, about ratings, criteria, and the scoring.
Yes, sir.
Can you explain to me what you guys have done with oral interview? What's oral interview?
So if you go just above that table, you'll see there's a, a long list of bullet points there. And what we've done there is we broke out what those 24 different criteria were that the raiders were, were using to consider these proposals. And so the first half of that list is, here are all the things on the rating sheet when you're reading the written proposal. And then the second half of that is, here are the considerations when you're there in the room with the proposal, proposers delivering their presentations to you. And so oral interview, they were rated on presentation, organization, clarity, communication skills, technical understanding, and responses to questions. And one of the benefits of doing the oral interviews is actually, more often than not, the proposer, the, the team that is speaking to you and telling you what they intend to do on your project, that's who's most likely going to be doing the work. And so it's an opportunity to get a feel for them and consider, how do they present themselves? And when this team is in front of the public, perhaps at a workshop or before this body in a city council meeting, how are they gonna, how will they comport themselves in public? And, you know, is there some, some level of, how do we see them representing the city? How do we see them representing this project? And professionalism. And, you know, of course, standing up here before you today, or your work there on the dais, that's obviously a consideration, and you want to put your best foot forward.
Okay, but how many people you guys interviewed, let's say?
We interviewed five teams. Oh, each of the teams, I would say, roughly brought five people apiece, and it was not all at once. We spaced it out through the course of a day, and so we would let a proposer know, we'll see you at nine o'clock.
From one company? From just one company?
I would say five people at a time, or six people at a time.
From one company?
Yes, sir. And they might take different, different portions of the presentation depending on their area of expertise. So for example, when talking about some of the engineering considerations, they might have their, their engineering lead do that portion of the presentation. For example, they might have it led by the project manager or the project lead, and then they kick it off to other members of the team, and, and that's typically how they go.
The reason I'm asking these questions is because HNTB, the score is 1,057. Right next one, AE, AE COM?
AE COM.
Or AE COM?
Yes.
Is 1,000.
Yes, sir.
If you just, oral interview brought HNTB on top of the other company, just the difference, the oral company difference is 58 points. So if you leveled them the same, if you would score them the same, AE COM would come on top. I mean, all of a sudden, this oral interview put one person on top than the other. I mean, just one item.
I understand what you're saying.
No, that's, that's an important part. I mean, I think as you look at their scores side by side, you're, you're right, they're very close in many respects, but the, the presentation that they make, as Justin points out, that is generally how you can expect folks, at least in our professional experience, how you can expect them to perform when they are out in public. Not to say the AE COM folks weren't good, they just weren't as good as the folks that we're recommending to you. And when you look at the other scores, 300 to 314, 288 to 281, 63 to 71, 62 to 48, I mean, they are very, very close. And, and it does get to a point where you want to, in order to guard against subjectivity, you want to have that bank of people that Justin described, who are the evaluators. So it isn't just him making the recommendation, or it isn't just me making the recommendation. This is a whole scope of people that work in this field and have many, many years combined looking at these different players, and probably have worked with these players on other projects.
So certainly, the, the oral interview is an important consideration in evaluating these teams. Anybody can put together a great proposal on paper, but, you know, the extension of that is, I can write a great staff report, but can I come up here and convince you that what I've written in that staff report is true and meaningful and helpful to you? And to what degree does my professionalism and my presentation to you help get that across? It's, it's part of the consideration.
Okay. All right. Zarganian?
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the presentation. I know, through Metro, I know the folks at HNTB, AE COM, Nelson Nygaard, I don't know the Placeworks or the Steer Davies Gleve Group. I mean, they're, they're preeminent, HNTB and AE COM are preeminent engineering firms and planning, transportation planning firms. Nelson Nygaard did our own Glendale mobility study, contrary to the assertions by some of the ignorant members of the public that we did that maybe about 10 years ago, if I'm not mistaken, maybe 11 years ago, not back in the 1990s.
2006, I believe.
There we go. I was right on. Also, Pat, I know Pat, and your cohort is Tanya?
Yes.
Who, who has been helping us with the Doran Overpass and Grade Separation Project. So I think they're very familiar. These are the guys who faced the Pellicconi Park people in those sometimes robust meetings that they have. So I'm, I'm very comfortable with HNTB. You know, I don't, I don't know about the minutia of the scoring, but suffice to say that I'm sure it was a fair process, and if HNTB came out on top, I think that's great. They're very qualified. Just a couple of questions as to how deep this planning effort is going to go. I know, speaking to my, my colleague several months ago, before this issue even came up, Mr. Sananian was describing in China, certain wireless capacitor programs with the electrification of these. Are, is this, is this something possible? And is this in the scope of the analysis, the technology that's going to be proposed?
It absolutely is. So part of the decision-making process that we all as stakeholders will go through in, in getting to a locally preferred alternative, the work that you, the city council, your considerations have to include, what are the technologies? That has everything to do with, what's the quality of service going to be like? Where can we run it? And what's it going to cost? And so, yes, off-wire technologies, which the last time this council talked about a feasibility study in 2005, were, I, I don't believe there were any examples of that in the United States. Today, there, there are quite a few examples of that in service outside the US and within. So these emerging technologies are definitely part of the consideration, particularly their, with regards to their ripeness. One question is, just because something is cutting edge, does that make it, do we want to be the first? Do we want to be the second to give it a shot? And all of those are sort of part of the technology portion of this feasibility study. And ultimately, again, the, the goal of this study is to, after 12 months, bring back to you, the, the decision-makers on behalf of the city, the best information you could possibly have to make an informed decision. Is this right for us? Do we want to proceed down this road? And even though you may have been part of that process every step of the way, at the end of the day, you're going to want it all as one comprehensive report that you can chew on, and that's what we're after here.
And as, as we go forward, the technology for these are moving quickly. I know the Metro is thinking of some type of similar electrification of the gold line with the inductive charging, but it's, it's rapidly developing, so let's, let's keep our minds open in that regard. And, and in that vein, I know that the PRT, the Hyperloop, isn't quite there yet, but in the next few months, if that becomes more of a reality, I'm not, I don't want to spend a lot of time on the, the PRT component, because I don't think it's there yet. However, you know, leave a chapter in the, in the, the report that we're going to get on that. And of course, if it develops at a faster rate, I know Elon Musk is talking about different type of things, and there's two competing Hyperloop companies. Keep that, keep us abreast of that, because we may want to, as a council, ask a little greater focus on these new technologies that may change some of the issues that we're discussing, like ridership or stations, right-of-ways and things like that. Lastly, I think the key part of this, I know we've got brilliant engineers all over. Mr. Agajanian is standing up straight. So I'm, there's no doubt in my mind that we can design a streetcar project that's going to be successful. However, I think the key hurdle is going to be the financing component of this. So I know that that's part of the, the model. You talked about federal funds, state funds. Let's, you know, Metro has some money. Let's focus on that almost as much as the technical details, because, you know, one without the other doesn't work. You really need both in hand. And certainly, if you've got that pot of money available, it's a good thing, and certainly makes a project much more feasible to become a reality.
So, recall that in summer of 2016, when the community development department was briefing the city council on a series of workshops on the South Glendale Community Plan, the transit picture in Glendale was part of that discussion, and streetcar was part of that discussion. And that was, I believe, July and August of 2016. Then comes in November of 2016, Measure M, and shortly thereafter, this funding opportunity from SCAG. And that was, the, the thought process was, wouldn't it be nice if we could study this? And then, wouldn't it be nice if we could fund it? And both of those opportunities sort of... And both of those opportunities sort of presented themselves. How we theoretically could fund this, here's Measure M suddenly, a new funding source for projects of all sorts, as well as this SCAG funding opportunity to do the study.
I mean, we're, we have earmarked a couple hundred million dollars for the BRT, the Burbank-Glendale-Pacadena BRT. Would I swap that money out for the streetcar in Glendale? Maybe I would. But I'm just saying, there's, there's pots of money out there that sometimes appear quickly. And the good thing is that having this project in concept and already engineered, of course, this isn't preliminary engineering, but as a concept presented, gives our opportunity to grab those additional pots of money that much better when they do appear.
I think that's right. We want to have a plan in place, we want to be ready.
Thank you very much.
Very, very briefly, I just, I, I do want to say that the direction seems to be the electrification of, of cities, and, and I'm happy to hear that you're, you're going in that direction. That, I, I, first of all, I want to thank you for a very, very comprehensive report and very well done. I think this is the first time you've appeared before us.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, well, well done, well done. And it sounds like the study is, is pretty all-inclusive, and, and that is also a strength. So, thank you. That's good.
Okay, a couple of quick questions. The 9.7 miles, is that all the way to Burbank?
Yes.
Like 10 miles? And the price that we have, 97 million to 243 million per, you know, for the whole thing, or 10 million to 25 million per mile? Is it for both ways? Like when you go up to, up on Brown North, coming back south, is it the, when you say per mile, is it for both, both sides?
Double traffic.
Both traffic? Is it double traffic?
So I believe that that figure is simply a straight line on a map, multiplied by the cost assumptions of constructing a streetcar per mile. Research done, I believe, summer 2016, the best available estimates at that time, which are national figures. Part of the consideration here, part of why this study is important, is it's going to do a local, relevant, Glendale-specific cost estimate for this project that we did not, we don't have, that we did, we don't have as a benefit of that research that was taken mostly from national sources. There's research out there, there's examples of other streetcars in other places, but how much does it cost to build things in Los Angeles, in the Los Angeles area is rather different.
What I'm asking is, this is for two-way traffic? I mean, the cost that we have here, is it for two-way traffic? Because if you go up north on Brand, you have to come back down, right? So is it for two-way traffic, or is just?
What you see at the, at the 97, it's a good question. That's going to be on the low end. That will economize on, on one track that will split to two, to allow for passage at certain locations, and then come back to the one track, to the extent that you're going to.
Siding, there'll be a siding.
Siding is the term. To the extent that you go to multiple track and, and an extensive, an extensive route, then it'll start to creep up. The important factor will also be, and we talked about this last time, are we having to assemble right-of-way? A lot of folks will say, well, we have the old red car right-of-way. Modern technology being what it is, we might not want to cite the streetcar in that right-of-way. Maybe it's an existing street right-of-way or other right-of-ways. So that also will have a tremendous impact on the fungibility of, of that cost.
And also, speaking of the super capacitors, you know, the, the superchargers, I, when I was in China last, a couple of weeks ago, I visited a couple of these factories, and what they were saying was, in the morning, they can charge the batteries for three minutes and go for 20 miles. This was for buses, I mean, for, for, streetcars are a little different. And every station that they wanted between the stations, they could have a supercharger that would take 25 seconds to charge the batteries to get you to the next station. So, and there were new rails, new, new, new cars, or streetcars, that they were on one rail only. It didn't have two tracks, it was only one track. So it was very interesting to see those things. But we, I'm looking forward to this, to this project to move forward and get the reports back sooner than 12 months, because we want to build this thing in our lifetime. And of course, funding is very important, and we're looking up to Mr. Najarian to swap that money for him.
Get more money too. Yeah, that's something we should talk about, maybe. I, I don't want to scare Metro and say we don't want the BRT anymore, but.
No, no, we want the BRT, but we want some of the funding to, to fund this project as, so we can move it forward. But going to BRT, speaking of PRT, I know the technology is not, may, may not be there, but how, how do we make that part of this process? I mean, is there, is, is there a cost? Cost, is there cost involved that is not?
There is a cost.
My understanding was, we, we wanted that option built into this.
So as an ad alternate, yes. You, you will have the ability, I think maybe it's just terminology, so as an ad alternate, as we move further into this process, if the city council says, you know what, we do want that PRT, we want you to look at it, HNTB is giving us a price to say, then this is what it costs to do it. But if we, if the council decided now, we don't want that ad alternate, we're just going to go with the straight streetcar, then we wouldn't want to pay for that. Same thing if Burbank decided to bail out.
I understand. So do we have a bid from them already?
We do.
We do? Okay. All right, so we'll discuss this later.
Yes.
All right, thank you, thank you very much. Any, any more questions on this item? Motion?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Zagajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sananian?
Mayor Garpadian?
Yes, what's next, please?
The only other item is a motion to adjourn on the second.
We don't have a council comments?
Not for the special meeting?
Not for the special meeting, so we are.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
That's it, no roll call required.
No, no, okay. We go, now we're going to reconvene.